The city council meeting, we have a public hearing for the proposed bond resolution for Wesleyan. Is there anyone, we'll now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to speak for or against the bond resolution?
I'd like to speak for.
All right.
Barry Pritz, VP for Finance Administration at the college. It's a pretty common thing lately that we've been coming to the city and over really over a number of years to assist us in providing opportunities for bond financing for projects at the college. We have two that are on the cusp of development at this point in time. One is an electrical project to replace all the light bulbs basically in interior and exterior on the campus for energy efficiency purposes. It's got a kind of sort of guaranteed savings program associated with it with a cost of one point something million dollars at this point in time. We also have a second project, which is the renovation of Donie Hall, which will be now become air-conditioned and upgraded as far as primarily stairwells, bathrooms, some of the common areas. This will allow, you know, private housing for students, about 55 private rooms and an additional about seven or eight double rooms, all air-conditioned and just upgraded. So, you know, one of the things that we have to do always is try to upgrade our facilities, meet the expectations of families and students who are interested in coming to Wesleyan. So this is just a continuation of programming that we've been doing, a lot of development in the residence halls. And I have with me tonight Greg Isaacs and with Cruz and Associates, and also have John Stumpf from Step Ten Johnson, who's serving as our bond counsel. They're available if you guys want to make car mats or if anybody has any questions. John?
I'll clarify. John Stumpf, Step Ten Johnson. I'll clarify probably the most important point of the evening is that this bond issue has absolutely no liability to the city associated with it. The repayment of the debt is contingent solely upon the university and no credit nor taxing authority of the city is pledged in any way, shape, or form to the repayment of the bonds. The city is simply a conduit for the bonds and this allows the university to take advantage of taxes and financing, which is a little restricted.
Anyone else wish to speak towards the bond issue? Hearing no other comments, then we'll close the public hearing and start the council, city council agenda. With that, I ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and we'll have a pledge of the flag.
I pledge the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome our guests this evening. As tradition has it, we'd like all the Wesleyan students that are here to stand up, face the camera, and tell what your name is, where you're from, and what's your major. So why don't we get in the back of the room.
I'm Mark Temple from New Jersey and I'm a sports business major.
Hey, my name is Jordan Alpern. I'm from Brussels in Belgium and I am in a business administration major.
I'm Lexi Matarji. I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I'm an accounting major.
I'm Fuli Bevial. I'm from Dallas, Texas and I'm a business administration major.
I'm Joan Stafford from Western Virginia and exile science major.
I'm Mason Barnhart. I'm from Wellsboro, West Virginia and I'm a political science major.
I'm Tyler Broadwater from Vienna, West Virginia and I'm also a business administration major.
I'm Antonio Harris from Fort Lauderdale, Florida and I'm also a sports business major.
My name is Dylan Davis. I'm from North Carolina and I'm a sports business major.
My name is Anthony Robinson. I'm from Frederica, Virginia and my major is business.
My name is Douglas Oliveira. I'm from Rio, Brazil. My major is business administration.
My name is Ryan Deal. I'm from Maryland and I'm an accounting major.
My name is Mark Stewart. I'm from Hurricane, West Virginia and I'm an accounting major.
My name is Alan Kreis from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania and I'm a marketing major.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Glad you're here. I hope you pick up a little information this evening and write Mr. McCauley or whoever your professor is on campus that has you being here, a good report, and come back, see us again. Thank you. Greg, Barry, any additional comments you want to make regarding the bond issue?
I think on the agenda is the parameters resolution to be considered tonight, and I think that this is the last legal action we'll need to proceed to go to market.
Mr. Clemmons, if it was the will of the council, you could bump the consideration of that bond resolution up. That would be up to you and the council.
I think unless there's a objection, we'll move the, what is it, item G1 up to the present time. Is there a motion to approve the commercial development bond resolution 2014-04? Still moved. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call for questions. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Clemmons, since it's a resolution, if you could roll call, vote that.
That's right. Want to call the?
Richard Clemmons?
Aye.
Pamela, her is not here. John Waltz?
Aye.
Ron Pugh?
Aye.
Thomas O'Neil?
Yes.
J. David Thomas?
Yes. And we'll need your signature on that. Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Keep me straight. You all have a safe trip home.
The Wesleyan reps would like to, they're welcome, stick around.
They're welcome, stay around the rest of the evening.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I really appreciate all the help you guys give us. It's been a great relationship and let's keep it going. Thanks a lot. Very good. Thank you, guys. Have a safe trip. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Jeremy McGowan. He'd like to talk about the automatic license plate recognition reader. Jerry?
Thank you. Members of the city council, citizens, guests of Buchanan, I am Jeremy McGowan and I am a longtime member of this community and I am very concerned. On Friday, December 27, 2013, the Record Delta ran a story entitled "BPD to Start Scanning License Plates." I was greatly dismayed by the knowledge that our small community of less than 6,000 people was now using automatic license plate readers. Let me be clear, I am not against the police. I used to be a police officer in the military myself. However, I am against the use of this specific equipment for very specific reasons. My concerns lie with what I and apparently many individuals and organizations feel is a trend of our federal government becoming too heavily involved in our daily life and all too willing to restrict individual liberties and freedoms. The first newspaper article alluded to the technology coming from a grant. As I am extremely familiar with the process of federal grants, I could not fathom how a city such as ours with a very low crime rate, a low population, and zero sensitive facilities that could be a terrorist target was able to qualify for such a grant. We have an area of three square miles. Therefore, I filed a FOIA request with the city of Buchanan so I could better understand why the city had this technology and how we obtained it. I felt certain this technology was pushed onto the city instead of having the city go through the normal channels of applying for and winning a grant. This caused me to wonder even more as to the why. Why did the Department of Homeland Security want Buchanan to have this technology so badly? The recent leaks by Edward Snowden has many of us very concerned with the overreach of the NSA and their proven warrantless wiretapping. Our government's actions should illustrate the cause for my concern. My fears are not without precedent and the current events are not conspiracy theories as these are all very well-known and documented events. My FOIA request therefore included a request for the grant application submitted which would justify the city of Buchanan having need for an ALPR system. In a subsequent newspaper article printed before my request was returned, Chief Gregory stated that the ALPRs were given to the city apart and separate from the grant application. This solidified my fear that the federal government really wanted Buchanan to have this technology. The West Virginia State Police Intelligence Unit's manual entitled "Automatic License Plate Reader or ALPR Project Policy and Procedures" states in Section 6, Paragraph 4 that the supervisor of the patrol unit using an ALPR shall make sure that the ALPR is placed on a platform that is highly utilized by an officer who is aggressive and productive. Aggressive is a term that I, as a supervisor in law enforcement, would never call my troops. It is, the connotation is not one that is good with public morale. My fear is not the use of the equipment for the assistance of the officers in the car to identify stolen vehicles, Amber alerts, or at-risk citizens. This is the function of the officer himself. An equipment that helps him do his job in a more efficient manner is not only inevitable through technological advances but should also be welcomed by all. I believe that the use of the ALPRs will have a more detrimental effect between the relationship of the community and that of the police than it will have of a beneficial assistance, and this is due to the data that the ALPRs generate. The federal government is unconcerned with the recovery of stolen vehicles or catching insurance cheats. They are craving data on each and every one of us. The ALPRs don't just cross-reference your license plate with a known offenders list. They take photographs and generate searchable and indexing metadata combined with the time, the date, and the GPS data of each and every vehicle which passes past an ALPR. This data is sent to the West Virginia Intelligence Fusion Center, which is under the control of the Department of Homeland Security, not a state police database, which was alluded to in the newspaper article. Please feel free to visit the webpage of the West Virginia Fusion Center and you will see the Department of Homeland Security seal in the upper right-hand corner of the webpage. We already know that the federal government targeted conservative groups through the IRS. This is public knowledge and has been proven in congressional hearings. So it's not a difficult thing to think that the same government could target individuals in a very similar manner through the data generated by the ALPRs. Why is this any, why is this relevant to us here in Buchanan? Well, imagine that a group of Buchanan residents wanted to protest an EPA ruling on coal mining restrictions in front of the courthouse. Logically, most attendees would drive and park in the city parking lot near the post office. Necessarily, there would be an increased police presence to ensure that things didn't get out of hand either by the protesters or for those that shout their opposition. So a patrol car with an ALPR installed drives through the city parking lot. As the patrolman is looking for signs of vandalism and doing his job, looking for other criminal behavior, the ALPR is silently recording each and every single license plate in the parking lot, most of which are members of the group protesting the EPA. In response to my FOIA question to the city, number 5B, exactly what information is recorded, the city of Buchanan states in their official response, quote, "Only the scanned plates and items it captures as plates, such as bumper stickers." Bumper stickers. Many people keep bumper stickers with their political affiliations on the back of their car, near the license plate. Some are anti-Obama stickers, some are "don't tread on me" stickers, some are funny, some are direct, some are vulgar. But each and every one of these stickers are protected by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, as is the right to freedom of assembly that the protesters in front of the courthouses are exercising. When people in Buchanan find out the ability of the ALPRs to capture and send this information to the Department of Homeland Security, it will curtail individual liberties and freedoms through the knowledge that the citizens of Buchanan are under constant scrutiny. Innocent people will begin to fear punishment if they exercise their First Amendment rights, if they exercise their rights on issues where they do not agree with the government. This is in violation of the First Amendment's protection of the right to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. One cannot protest if one is in fear of persecution. Once that captured data is uploaded to the Fusion Center, the Department of Homeland Security now has a fairly accurate list of all members of the Buchanan-based anti-EPA group who are attending a protest at the courthouse. And they also know that, for example, Mr. John Doe, who lives at 123 South Canola Street, drives a silver Chevy pickup truck and not only attended the protest but has a disabled veteran's license plate, a Gulf War service decal, and an anti-Obama bumper sticker. All compiled, this is terrible for Mr. Smith, as we now know the Department of Homeland Security has identified military veterans as right-wing extremists. This, if you are unaware, was printed in an official intelligence assessment which was sent to law enforcement officials throughout the nation. Representative John Boehner found this offensive enough and claimed that it was so outrageous and came to the defense of veterans. Between 2008 and 2009, the DHS issued four reports obtained by the Associated Press on individual extremist groups, from Al Qaeda in domestic cells to the Hammerskin area nations. But the inclusion of the military veteran as a potential domestic terror threat is an example of the thought process of our federal government. How many in this room now served in the military or have had family that did? You and they are now generally classified by the Department of Homeland Security as potential members of extremist groups and you are watched for incidents of domestic terrorism. The history of the DHS and the federal government in general with such data is proven and verifiable. This location data reveals extremely sensitive information about who we are and what we do. This can be used to track people's movements for months or years. This pervasive surveillance undermines our ability to move through our community without being watched by the federal government. The singular fact that ALPRs generate these databases should be enough to prohibit their use within the city. As our lawyers and law enforcement members here today should know, it is illegal and unconstitutional for police to track a person's movement via a GPS without a warrant. This was upheld in the recent Supreme Court case entitled "United States v. Jones" in a final ruling which was issued January 23 of 2012. The Supreme Court determined that the government's installation of a GPS device on the defendant's vehicle and its use of that GPS to monitor the vehicle's movements constituted an illegal search without a warrant. The court affirmed this through a nine-to-zero decision. Unanimous, a nine-to-zero decision. The use of the ALPRs for monitoring both the innocent and the criminal of Buchanan is also a violation of the Fourth Amendment. GPS data is being recorded in conjunction with the photographic and time evidence of a license plate and other identifying information on a vehicle to build a database capable of tracking anyone who has ever been scanned. The U.S. Supreme Court managed to rule against GPS tracking in a nine-to-zero decision. I expect they will rule against the use of ALPRs, which record the time, date, and location via GPS systems plus photographic evidence, and that will also be a Fourth Amendment violation. Furthermore, one of my final concerns with the ALPRs is that it is a well-established fact through case law and U.S. Supreme Court decisions that running a license plate of a parked car in a private driveway is prohibited by the curtilage zone of the Fourth Amendment. So what happens as an officer with an ALPR drives through a residential area where private citizens have their private vehicles parked in their private driveways? The answer is simple. The Fourth Amendment curtilage zone is breached when the time, date, location, and photos of those vehicles and the owner's identities are captured and sent to the DHS, who will then incorporate it into their database. The use of the ALPR systems is in fact a violation of the Fourth Amendment due to its inherent and primary design of data mining and recording the location, times, and places of scanned plates without discretion. Chief Gregory was quoted in the newspaper as saying, and I'm paraphrasing, "The database isn't stored locally because the laptops are too small to be able to handle that amount of data." However, in the city's official response to my FOIA request in question 5A, they state that the data is kept locally for 28 days. This means that there is approximately one month of data in the laptop, in the patrol car, on everyone in Buchanan who had a chance to drive past an ALPR. How secure is this information physically? I ask if anything has ever been stolen from a police car. I think it's safe to say the answer is probably yes. How secure is this electronically? We know that this information is transmitted to the Fusion Center from the laptop via a cellular-linked air card. I would assume that this information is about as secure as the data on the 24 million Americans that had their credit card information stolen from the hacking attempt to target. Because there is clear evidence to support violations of both the First and the Fourth Amendments of the U.S. Constitution through the use of the ALPRs, it will only be a matter of time before the city of Buchanan is hit with a lawsuit regarding the use of this technology. Such a lawsuit would cause undue economic damage to the city, damage greater than the benefit the city receives in the using of the ALPRs, especially since the city states that as of January 24, 2014, there had been zero traffic stops and zero citations issued from the use of the ALPRs, and that also means zero revenue. However, over 6,000 records were said to have been held in the local database. That means that roughly every 24 days, the ALPR has over 6,000 records ready to be sent to the Department of Homeland Security on the times, locations, and dates of the citizens of Buchanan as we go around our daily lives. The concern of abuse with this data is a very real concern. Chief Gregory mentions in the newspaper that there are policies and procedures in place to prevent the abuse, such as a person using the data illegally or off the books to track or harass someone. The significant flaw in this thought process is that people break laws. We have the police for this exact reason. We break laws. However, the police are just as human as everyone else is. Having access to this database, regardless of policies to prevent it from being abused, will cause it to be abused. Not one singular person in this room, nor one singular governmental body represented in this room, is constantly in compliance with all rules, myself included. As a prime example, I feel the city is in non-compliance with both state law and with a recent circuit court decision regarding the fees charged for the FOIA information that I requested. Even though I cited court cases to back up my claim, the city continues to ask for money, which I believe is contradiction to state law and court decisions. However, because we have a wonderful legal system here, I am planning on filing for injunctive relief for this request unless another solution can be achieved prior to that. So if the city can be in non-compliance with state law, then a singular officer can be in non-compliance with a policy to prevent abuse. There will be victims of this data. There will be lawsuits. The question is, will Buchanan allow the continued use of this equipment and help build the national database of everybody's whereabouts? Or will we follow the example of New Hampshire, which passed a statewide ban on the use of the ALPRs due to severe privacy concerns presented by its citizens? I would recommend to the city council to direct this technology to be removed from the patrol car or cars which it is currently installed and to prohibit the future use of all ALPRs within the city of Buchanan. Thank you. And if possible, I would like to have this included in the minutes of today's meeting. And I have more copies, should any member of the council wish to have a copy.
Thank you. There's another one here. You got a copy? I've got some. Sorry. Thank you, Jeremy. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak concerning this particular issue at the present time?
Okay. I guess members of the council would save our comments for the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Well, Tom, maybe we should discuss it now.
Okay.
Well, I mean, while Jeremy's here, he doesn't have to wait for the whole meeting to hear our comments.
I agree.
Oh, you're asking me to say what, oh, okay. Sorry, I thought you were gonna...
Well, I'll say something too.
No, I'll defer to you.
But go ahead, you go first.
No, you're more senior than I am.
Thanks. I have less hair than you do.
All right. First of all, I want to thank Jeremy for coming and I think it's clear, well, I mean, it's, I mean, he's put a great deal of, you know, thought into his remarks and I appreciate him coming and sharing them with us. We have spoken, or well, we've communicated through mail quite a bit on this issue the past several weeks and it's helped me, I think, distill a lot of my own, you know, concerns over the program. I'm fortunate to have had also the opportunity to communicate with Ron, with Chief Gregory, and with others about this. I am certainly no expert on this program and I would, I just want to communicate, I'm trying to think of the best way to say it, I'm just trying, I would like to communicate my own feelings of concern over the program. As I understand it, the program has kind of two applications. The first being relatively uncontroversial, I think, as you alluded to, Jeremy, in your comments, the, what's called within the parlance of the program, the hot list, allowing the existing legal and natural abilities of any given officer to be enhanced, to see folks that are warned for outstanding warrants, you know, a sex offender that's within a school district, you know, things of that nature. I think that that's uncontroversial. Where the controversy arises is in the secondary functionalities of this system, and that is the suspicionless capture of information about citizens. I think, hopefully, others will speak to maybe the details of, you know, the program because I can't say that I am personally knowledgeable enough about the program to speak about it factually, and that needs to change. I think we have to, we need more information about this program. My understanding is that it's not subject to any, that any state code, any state law, that it's a program that is, that functions within the authorization of the West Virginia State Police. What I find to be particularly important to me, just to focus on one thing that you said, is that the possible negative impact that this program could have between the citizens and the police and the erosion, the potential erosion at least, of public trust. Public trust is a very important thing for a community. I'm fortunate to be spending this legislative session working at the legislature in Charleston, in the state senate, and the water situation in Charleston is an example of how a community breaks down when there is a loss of public trust. People do not trust the water that comes out of their tap right now, and that's an extremely fundamental thing, and it is proving to be a source of a great deal of difficulty, as you might expect for that community. This is a different, this is a different type of trust that we're talking about here, but the principle, I think, applies in that people need to be able to feel that they are safe. That cuts both ways. There are, that's why this is not a, you know, this is a, that's why it's a controversial issue because there are arguments to be made on both sides of it. That's what makes it controversial. There are aspects, I could imagine that, you know, for every EPA rally that's captured by an ALPR, you know, there's the chance for a missing child, or an abducted child to be reunited with their parents, and we have to find that, we have to find where that, we have to protect all of the things that need to be protected, including our civil liberties, among the most important ones of them. The issue with respect to Jones versus US, my feeling is that when does a network of these ALPRs become indistinguishable from a particular GPS unit that's planted on a, I think there is some number, there is some number that exists when you have a million ALPRs deployed within a given geographic area. It is no different than having a GPS unit on a given vehicle. Now, I'd say one is obviously not near that threshold, but vigilance is called for. I want to, I think I want to make sure that it's clear that your comments are not, they are not sourced in concern over our local law enforcement, that there is no, as I understand what you're saying, and I... That there is no, as I understand what you're saying, and I, from our communications, email specifically, that, that there is no concern that local law enforcement is going to use the data.
No, I come from a law enforcement background.
Right, right.
With 12 years of law enforcement. I used to have an NCIS terminal in my vehicle. I had the ability to run license plates just like anybody else without going through dispatch. You know, we were told that you can't run Elvis's license plate, which is still existing and registered, by the way. But things like that. My concern is not the abuse on the local side. My concern is the abuse on the national level. And like you said, when the ALPR system here is uploaded, has uploaded the data to the database at the West Virginia Fusion Center, who is in cooperation with every other Fusion Center, which of, there are 52 now, I believe.
Yeah, and that's where I say that we need, that we need more information out there. And we need more information out there about this program because I, you know, who has access to this data that is generated?
There is a statement, from what I received from the FOIA request, stated that any person or agency who signs a mutual letter of understanding will be able to have access to and search the data. And I have that in the policy manuals.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I don't want to belabor, I don't want to belabor my point, but I just wanted, I just wanted, this is something that deserves, that deserves attention on our part and some vigilance. And I'm sure you've got something to say, Ron.
Well, you said it all very eloquently. Actually, my concern really was having to do with the Fourth Amendment rights, our rights of illegal search. I believe Jones versus U.S., at one point in that decision states that they're not to use GPS units for tracking nor any other electronic devices. And to me, that statement in particular takes care of the license plate readers. It is an electronic device and I don't know how you could distinguish that from what the ruling was over the Jones decision. I too see that it could be very beneficial in some situations, but I will reiterate what Jeremy said in his speech a while ago, is that I am very concerned about what our government is doing subversively to us with the IRS and the NSA and who knows what else. I was in, my military service included military intelligence where we actually gathered information and sent to NSA. And I know that we gathered information that probably J. Edgar Hoover kept for years. But I, I'm in favor of, well, I won't even say that right now. We'll just let somebody else speak and then we'll discuss this at a later time.
I thought, I mean, I thought Tom raised an important point about the trust issue with it. First of all, I appreciate when anyone comes and articulates something that they've thought out quite a bit. I'd want to be careful not to politicize it one way or the other. You know, I certainly think that can work both ways with people gathering all different kinds of things. My concerns are the same as they are my use of this thing. You know, one time I found out they knew where I was when I took some picture that I didn't tell it to know where I was when I took the picture.
The difference being that this is a voluntary...
Absolutely. That's a voluntary act. And of course, that's where we're at a point of distinction. And I think another thing we might have to explore is with Matt and whether Matt and his staff believe this is critical or this is salient to them doing their work. You know, if they believe, oh yeah, this is critical, then we have to evaluate it one way. If it's just a nice thing that we have and we can use, then we have to look at it a completely different way. So I think that'll have to be a part of the dialogue, but I appreciate you bringing it forward.
The comment I have to make is that, you know, we should have had this kind of discussion looking at the issues prior to simply accepting Matt's recommendation that we go ahead and accept this equipment. I mean, we've had, the last two council meetings, we've had more enlightening discussions than we had in the initial presentation. And I think we all were looking at the positive sides of it to help the, our law enforcement officers and to enhance the safety of our community. But I mean, I feel, I'm somewhat embarrassed that we didn't ask the tough penetrating questions that obviously we should have. And, you know, I'm of the opinion that this should not be the last discussion of this, that we need to have further information. And I mean, I'm at the position, quite frankly, to not use the equipment until we have further discussions about what are the pros and cons, the cost-benefit analysis. The, Jeremy, I appreciate you coming, Jeremy, and giving your presentation, but you know, when you look at the state of New Hampshire, evidently they are not allowing this to happen in that state. And so I'm of the opinion that we need to continue further discussion, get more information, look at the pros and cons. I want to hear from our city attorney too, what his thoughts are, but I'm sort of in the camp that we ought to suspend the use until we have a more definitive discussion about it and look at the pros and cons.
Any other comments from council? Any comments?
Well, I like to hear from, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I like to hear from David.
My feeling is that that, a motion like that is probably premature, at least until we have the opportunity to receive advice from, you know, our council in executive session.
I understand, but the thing that I'm concerned about is that we have the equipment in the vehicles now and we should have had a more comprehensive discussion about what we're doing. And if we don't do anything, I'm not suggesting for three months from now, we don't have that equipment in the vehicles, but I'm embarrassed that I didn't ask more penetrating questions. I had some concerns and I should have voiced them at the time, but I do, I do have some concerns now. And I think part of my concerns, quite frankly, is that the council, we didn't, we were sort of sleeping on the job, I think, in some ways.
I'll be honest with you, I don't even remember the issue being brought up, to be frank.
I don't either. I think, I think it was installed in the cruiser before, before it was brought before council.
Yeah, there's a process that I'm concerned about and I'm glad we're having this discussion now. And it's one of those areas that, you know, we need more involvement from the community to hear what they're, how they feel about it. And this trust issue with our citizens is very important.
Let me just go on record that I do support the LPR systems, at least as of today and what I know about them. I think they're very good. I think they're a labor-saving device. I'm more concerned about the health and welfare of my 12 grandchildren, where they might be or who might be near them than anything else. Let me also note that this is installed in one vehicle, just to clarify. It's only in one vehicle that the city has installed. It's only being used by one officer. I would suggest, and I'll give chief a chance to talk here, but I would suggest that we do continue this discussion in the future. And we get somebody that's knowledgeable from the Fusion Center to come talk to us and give a presentation and perhaps, chief, you could help bring that. Do you have comments you want to make now?
I've been a police officer with this city for 17 years. I've been your chief for almost 10. Even more than that, I've been a lifelong resident of the city of Buchanan and I'm currently raising two children in this community. My mandate as a police officer, as police chief in this city is to uphold the laws, protect the citizens and all who visit our setting. I take that mandate very seriously. I'd be on that. I take it very seriously because I am a lifelong resident of Buchanan and I do have children that I'm raising in this community. And their health and their welfare is of utmost importance to me. The actions that I take for the department are for the good of the city, for the good of the police department to help us to do our jobs more efficiently and effectively, to make this community as crime-free as we can, to keep all of our citizens, my children included, and all those folks that visit Buchanan as safe as we can. Our partnership with the Fusion Center is in that vein. The Fusion Center is an information-sharing agency. It provides an avenue for criminal investigations to help us more efficiently reach out and network in hopes of having better chances of solving criminal activities that occur here in our town. Criminal activities do occur every day in Buchanan. And as chief, as an officer of 17 years, as your chief for almost 10, I don't gauge my response to crime by the size of our population. I gauge it by the real issues that we have here in Buchanan. I've been here for 17 years. I've seen how this community has evolved for the good and the bad. We do have a fair share of issues. I've shared with you folks many, many times, a lot of the issues that we have here in our community. Council has shared their concerns with me as well in meetings past with the issues that we have right here in our community. Many of these issues involve drug crimes. When you have drug crimes, you also have thefts. When you have drug crimes, you're going to invite other criminal elements into your community. Each year, I have reports to council, a year-end report. I'm prepared to offer our 2013 year-end report at our next meeting in two weeks. On the top five of that list the last several years running, at least the last two or three in recent memory, drug crimes are right up there. Theft crimes are right with them. In fact, last year, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 63 drug crimes, 32 of which are felony drug crimes. The drug trade is bringing individuals from this area that are not native to Buchanan. We have dealt with people as far away as Detroit, Michigan, hub cities, to provide a lot of our drug problems here in Buchanan. When you have drug crime, you also have thefts. You also have the potential for a rise in violent crime. We are blessed. We are a blessed community that it has not escalated beyond control. It has not escalated to the point to where we see a lot of the problems that a lot of other cities have in terms of violent crimes. Theft crimes being out of control. I attribute a lot of that to the hard work that our officers are doing every day out here, to the efforts we're making to keep this community as crime-free and safe as we can. And it's in this vein that I take the actions that I do as your police chief. Because I am very aware, very aware of the real problems that we have and the potential for it to escalate to a point not, not one of us wanted to escalate to in this community. All you have to do is look around you. Buchanan is not immune to it. I'm not speaking to what, we're alone in facing these issues. Other communities have these. There are tools that are developed that assist law enforcement at doing their jobs. One of these tools is the LPRs. It was through our partnership with the Fusion Center that allowed us to acquire an LPR unit, something that would otherwise be unavailable to us because of the expense of the unit. They're approximately $20,000, $20,000 a unit. We are a small agency. We have a small budget. We do not have a lot of wiggle room to be able to afford a lot of the tools that we need, need to do our jobs. In addition to LPRs, some of these other tools are some of the equipment that we use for the investigation of drug crimes. Most of this equipment has been provided to us through grant monies. It was just the flip side around that the Fusion Center had attained a grant on its own and was able to award these machines to member agencies. From my understanding, this is not the only unit in West Virginia. This is the wave of the future. As technology continues to advance, we're going to see more pieces of technology become available to local law enforcement agencies to be able to do their jobs. Currently, there are 49 mobile units in the state of West Virginia. Forty-nine. Of those 49 units, there are 27 different agencies. I'm told by the Assistant Attorney General of West Virginia that there are agencies lining up to get these pieces of technology, to assist them in their investigations. LPR units are nothing more than a force multiplier. It's doing nothing more than if I were so motivated with a notebook and a pen to drive around and from everywhere I travel in town, from my plane view, writing down license plates in a notebook. LPR is a force multiplier. It speeds this up. It's a machine. It's doing nothing more than what the human eye is doing, only it's doing it quicker and more efficiently. It's looking at whether or not vehicles coming into our town are stolen, the plates that it captures, it's comparing it to the hot list that we've discussed, whether or not the plate is stolen itself, the vehicle stolen, whether an Amber Alert has been issued for this vehicle. Again, Mr. Clemens, as you've mentioned, your grandchildren, myself as a father of two children, that's of utmost concern to me. And if the police can have the ability to do something to make my children, to make our citizens safer, that's the vein that I take, my, the actions that I take. There are checks and balances. I've shared the policy and procedure manual with you folks. There are checks and balances in place to make sure that the unit is used for criminal justice purposes. So I can't just randomly go in and search it for just off of a whim. I've got to have a reason. Okay? If I'm searching the database in addition to the hot list, if I believe that a certain vehicle has been involved in a crime, prime example, just within the last couple of weeks, there was a request that came through NCIC to, for all agencies that had LPRs to search their database because a vehicle from another state had been involved in a homicide and fled the area. And the agency wanted other agencies with LPR units to search their database to see if that vehicle had been scanned in their local jurisdiction. We have, on many occasions, had fugitives from other regions come to Buchanan. If nothing else, for the simple fact that it is a small area. It is an ideal place to hide. We've had many fugitives come to this area. If somebody's coming to this town to do harm or has the potential to do myself or our citizens harm, would we not want our police to do everything they can, legally can, to prevent this? The LPRs have been in place for four years. When I stress legally, I'm following that up with this. They've been in place in West Virginia for four years. The Assistant Attorney General just mentioned to me that at no time have there been any issues in West Virginia with any agency in those four years in terms of abuse or any such issues that certainly I can understand folks have out there. I'm not insensitive to those issues. But there are checks and balances. There are policies, procedures. There are audits that are done on the database to show who queries it. Those audits are done by the state police. Those audits are done by the state police. We're assured that nobody can have access to this state police database. The database is managed by the state police through the Intelligence Exchange, not the Fusion Center. The state police. They conduct the audits. And again, in furtherance of the checks and balances. The LPR works off the plain view doctrine. Plain view doctrine is well-established in case law and says that whatever I can see with my eyes within plain view wherever I'm legally have a right to be. So if that's driving through a parking lot, if that's driving down the road, or if that's driving down the road and it's scanning something parked in a parking area, if I can see it with my eyes in plain view, then it's legal. It's the same principle as if I'm driving down the road and I look inside of, glance inside of a windows to say there's an open window to a house, and I see a meth lab inside, or I see marijuana plants, I have the right to search because I witnessed criminal activity within my plain view, even though it's behind what would normally be the privacy of the home. Because I can see it in plain view from a public place, the road, I have the legal authority to that. And that's the principle in which these LPRs work. Okay? Are there any questions?
Can you? Yeah, just briefly. The difference between, I thought these were interchangeable terms, but can you explain the difference between the Intelligence Exchange and the Fusion Center?
The Fusion Center is an agency that works on information sharing.
Only within the state of West Virginia or?
I believe that other states have Fusion Centers, but West Virginia has its own. The state agency is the central hub which networks, if you will, other member agencies with information sharing. The management of the data is managed by the state police. The West Virginia Intelligence Exchange. It's the intelligence aspect. It's the intelligence wing of the state police.
Okay, so the Intelligence Exchange is,
It's a law enforcement agency.
First of all, it's a separate agency from the Fusion Center.
Yes, sir.
The Intelligence Exchange is within the organization of the West Virginia State Police.
Yes, yes, sir.
The Fusion Center is not.
It is a state agency, but I don't believe it's under the wing of the state police.
Right.
Who's it under?
I believe that they, you would have to query them yourselves, but my understanding is the answer is the governor.
But they're not part of the state police. They are separate.
That's my understanding, yes. The state police fall under the umbrella of the Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety. My understanding is the Fusion Center would probably be within that umbrella as well, which is, again, the Director of DMAP's answers to the governor. He's an executive appointed.
Is the Fusion Center part of the homeland security?
I don't know. I believe that they are, but again, their direct connection is, yeah, it's an information sharing.
Matt, do you know of any police officer that has ever gone against the policies and procedures and ran an illegal check to NCIS of anything?
NCIC.
Buchanan police officer?
NCIC, yeah.
Buchanan police officer?
Any police officer.
I'm sure there are stories out there to give you an exact one. I cannot, I can assure you no Buchanan police officer has. And if they do, we have policies and procedures, checks and balances in place that should they do that, there are penalties.
I mean, any search is logged, right? You cannot search without leaving a paper trail that a search was.
Well, it's not even a paper trail.
It's electronic trail.
The problem is it requires a complaint to initiate an audit.
It's not necessary. I know for a fact that the NCIC is audited by the FBI. They do that regularly.
For certain tags that have high profiles, absolutely. Like I was talking about Elvis's license plate, that automatically generates a ping that it was searched for. But if somebody was to run my license plate for absolutely no reason whatsoever, it would require a complaint by me to be generated before an audit of the reason that my tag was run took place.
The FBI, in my experience, has conducted annual or regular audits of ourselves and the comm center and any other agency that has NCIC access. And I believe the same applies with the state police audits of the LPR database.
Well, I think what I'm trying to do here is kind of distill a bunch of questions that I think we would like to have answers to and.
What I think I'd recommend, we're pushing an hour on this topic at the moment. I don't disagree with the concept that we need to get some clarification. But I think this is where I would ask the chief if you would assist the council in getting some expertise here from whichever group is the most appropriate to give us a presentation. Meanwhile, if council members have individual questions, they can forward those to the chief and get responses or get additional information. But I don't think, I really don't think we can solve this issue this evening.
I don't think we can solve it, but I don't think if any of us have any more questions that there's no reason to wait. I didn't know we were under a time constraint for anything.
We're not under a time constraint, Ron, but if we're sitting here, what about this and what about that?
Well, there are questions that I'm sure people.
Well, what are your questions then?
Well, I'm sorry, can I, I just have a minute and then I'll be done. The agreement, the memorandum of understanding, was that, you know, we've had things, we've written contracts, you know, contracts that we write all the time have to be approved by the Attorney General's Office as matter of form. I've been a special assistant attorney general myself and I'm writing deeds for state agencies and those have to be approved by the chief counsel of the Attorney General's Office. The memorandum of understanding, was that signed off on by the Attorney General's Office? Do you know?
I don't. That's something I'd have to refer you to them.
All right. I'm done.
I do have one more question. Chief Gregory alludes to the fact that this is a technological advancement that is, he didn't say it, but alluded to the fact that it's needed in the performance of their duties. I'd like to ask the chief, has there ever been any type of technology that the Buchanan Police Department has just said no to?
Well, can you be more specific?
Has there ever been any type of equipment that was presented to the law enforcement department that the police officers or the department did not want to use for any specific reason?
Well, that I know of, but again, the technology that I seek is, in my experience, for the length of time I've been in law enforcement and the issues that I know that are here, the equipment that I seek and bring onboard is equipment that I feel was necessary for the advancement of our duties. I mean, I'm coming from a time, folks, I'm coming from a time when we didn't even have these. We didn't even have radios. Okay? So.
And you've asked.
Every piece of equipment I brought onboard, I feel is necessary. Whether it be our radios, whether it be surveillance equipment for drug operations. I certainly believe, I wholeheartedly believe in the LPR. It's a force multiplier. I believe that just the simple fact of having it not only assists us, but it keeps the potential for would-be criminals coming to Buchanan and harming us and our citizens down. I would like to believe that. Those are the, it's in that manner that I take the actions. And when I, the types of equipment that I seek, it's in that vein.
So, but Matt, one of the questions I had, and I don't have a problem, you know, discussing this at some other point in time in a lot more detail. But when you threw out the figure that it costs twenty thousand dollars, part of me says, well, if it costs twenty thousand dollars and it's this great a technology and will help your law enforcement officers, we should have got it anyway instead of just waiting until we got the equipment for free. You know.
Well, maybe we ought to buy.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a whole lot of issues we deal with finances, but when you're talking about the safety of our grandkids and our children and ourselves, the, it is, to me, twenty thousand dollars is not a lot of money to enhance the safety.
If that's the case, Mr. Clemens, I could give you a log. That we need, that I honestly feel we need, if you heard me discuss.
That's what I'm saying, Matt, is that, I mean, I'm not trying, your moles are fine as far as I'm concerned, okay? I just don't think we had the process to discuss this the way we needed to in depth. And something, I mean, we should have anticipated that there's a part of our community out there, based on what has happened recently over the years, is that we do feel like we live in a much different society today than years ago. And we live in a very divisive society today, I think. And that's why I felt that part of me says we ought to just hold off on this and discuss it a lot further. You know, the rest of the council doesn't want to do that. That's fine, but I want to, you know, why does New Hampshire not have it? What was their reason for not adopting it? I never knew that. I mean, were you aware of that when you made your presentation?
That New Hampshire does not have a unit?
That they, that's against the law. It's against law to do.
No, it wasn't.
I mean, there's a lot of things that none of us know about that we probably should know about before we do something.
Well, Channel 12 News FM did a little blurb on Fairmont's LPR systems, so.
Good.
You know, it's been around for quite a while.
Have you had any hits on it at all?
Nothing that has been of a criminal nature.
How much data has gone through so far? It was six thousand the last time?
Yeah, any given time. I haven't checked it for two or three weeks. It's around six thousand plates.
Two months, would you say?
The local, the local unit will only hold about, and I believe it's.
I mean, how long has the unit been online?
In operation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, gone.
Six weeks?
Two months. Yeah, mid-December.
Matt, you say that this is needed for the safety of our citizens, our children. And I don't disagree with you about that. I still consider it to be something similar to a GPS unit in the fact that it could track, and I don't understand why it has to read my license plate in my driveway. To me, that goes against the curtailage of the home. It's in the Fourth Amendment. You know, your house and your driveway, unless you have a criminal intent, cannot be searched. Now, my question is to you, for the safety of your officers out here, would you object to having a GPS unit put in each unit that the comm center could keep in contact and know where they each were at any given minute of any given day?
In our cruisers?
In your cruisers.
No, I wouldn't object to that. What do they have to hide? They're out here doing their duty.
I think that's totally, totally different concept here.
It's not that much totally different.
But I think it is because an LPR isn't tracking it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Doesn't track vehicles at all.
It's a one unit that works eight hours a day, five days a week. So if it just happens to catch it, how many times is it going to be on there?
If you had more of them, though, they would be operating twenty-four, seven.
I'm not seeking to have more. A week one's adequate.
In three mile radius, I think one is way too much.
Any additional comments I leave? We've got two folks that would like to have.
One component that I learned about that I wasn't aware of before, just the last day or two. County by county in West Virginia, you can go to the state sexual offense registry. And there, you have fifty-five lengths to fifty-five counties. And I don't know if you've ever gone to Upsher Counties or not, and you might think, oh, there are probably eight or ten or twelve people on that list, huh? I think there's like two hundred people on that list in Upsher County alone. Every, every single one of those individuals is now under the Interstate Reciprocity Act required to register their vehicles. And those vehicle plates are entered in this interstate database. And if there's a child abduction or something of that sort, would those individuals perhaps be considered first as possible abductors of children? If there's that? Absolutely, they are. Absolutely, they are. And, yeah, I'm not trying to weigh in one way or the other here, but I don't think that we should diminish the utility of this technology. Because I've got five kids and I've got five grandchildren, three of which are within a mile where I'm sitting right now. And if somebody snatches one of those kids and this community says no to that technology that might have worked the wonders of technology to locate that child before something terrible happened to them, then digest that as you make that decision.
I understand that, as you said before, that the plates that are entered are all interstate and not interstate. Is that right? There are no plates that we can read from other states?
The hot list is from NCIC. It's anything that's entered into NCIC from throughout the United States. So if this, if there's a hit from what the plate, from what the machine has scanned in its comparison to the hot list, it could be from anywhere, wherever it's entered as a wanted vehicle, whether it's a stolen vehicle, a stolen license plate, an amber alert on that vehicle. If it's an NCIC from anywhere in the United States.
And what was it at the last meeting you said about it only being for West Virginia plates? There was something said.
No, that was a database.
It could hit, it could hit a number.
The database. That's from another state and that's why the image is needed to confirm.
Or you couldn't determine what the plate was.
Right, it just reads an image that it recognizes as.
Recognize the characters, but not the state that's depicted on it.
Right, an image that it recognizes as a license plate.
Well, I'm sure that, is there a way, one last, sorry, this is really my last question. I'm sorry.
Really?
Is there, yes. Is there a way, is there a way to disable the hot list function from the data collection function? Where you can have the hot list working, but not be picking up everything else? Is there a way to do that?
I would have to refer you to. Again, I'm trained as an operator on this, not an expert.
Sergeant Weiss was going to be here, is he not?
He is not.
He's not here? I would, I would say, last thing I comment I average and occupy, is that I think that the council ought to have a definitive date that we will either reaffirm or not reaffirm this position.
Could it be after election day? No, I'm just teasing.
I think it needs to be when we have the opportunity to hear from folks that are knowledgeable about the system. So I don't think we can set a date today. These are busy folks that deal at the state level. So let's, let's wait till we can get that and then we can set.
I just want to do it at some point in time in the future that we reaffirm it or we don't.
Well, that's, that's fine. I don't have any issue with that.
Well, I think the citizens need to know we're really looking at this.
Oh, I think, I think they know.
I think they definitely know. My concern, as I said, is not for the Buchanan Police Department, but if we don't adhere and listen to what has happened in history before us where people have taken over governments and have gone into police states and thinking they were doing it as a good thing that would help the people and turns out like in Germany did when we were completely, or we, I wasn't born, when they were completely, you know, bewildered about what was going on and didn't realize it. And I can see with NSA, like I said, and the IRS and all these people spying on everybody else, including me, and God knows what kind of a database they've got from everybody in here. But it's, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I can't, I cannot deny what has come in history before us. And I think that is my concern is that this, this piece of equipment collects data that can be stored and can be obtained from the powers that are wanting to.
What you are articulating, Ron, is that there is an erosion of public trust in our, in our national institutions. And this is a real life, street level example of what happens when that happens.
I'll give the floor to Kathy. Kathy, you want the floor?
Just for a minute, because Jeremy made a statement. And my name's Kathy Collins-Fry. I'm retired and I'm a director of Upsher County. And at one time, I think, Matt, it was before you came on, I had attempted to try, we were getting new computer information, so software, and I wanted automotive vehicle locator software so that we would have it in all emergency response agency vehicles. And I was basically, I even brought the subject up and I didn't even get to anywhere near the county commission. I just did it within the law enforcement community. I was shot down right then. I was shot down right then, they did not want those, but I admired Matt for saying he doesn't have a problem with having that, because I can cite two, three incidents, four instances where we've had an officer hurt, we've had, and there was nobody around until somebody else, a public servant, came by, found the officer with two broken legs on, after a traffic stop. We've had another cruiser who was involved in a wreck, and he wasn't even on duty, and he couldn't radio in. Plus, we've had two officers that were brand, newbies, as we say, boots on the street, and I dispatched them, and they got lost, and I had to find, figure out where they were, like their surroundings and, and how they got there. So it's, it's a little bit different, but I wanted to bring this up to Jerry, Jeremy, because we actually did have a fact where I wanted to bring in some kind of GPS thing for the safety of our emergency responders.
There is a system I'm familiar with and have used in my, in my case, called APRS, which you can put a unit in a vehicle, you can put a unit on a bicycle, you can put a unit on a person if you want to. And it will track them, and it'll post where their whereabouts is within a minute or so with the, uh, with Google Maps and so on. And I listen to the scanner frequently, as we all do at City Hall. And I've heard on more than one occasion, when an ambulance is out there, or some other unit is out there, and they can't figure out where they're to go, or, you know, they missed a turn, or, and it would be so nice if all the units had a similar kind of device.
I did have one other instance that started my idea to get this at some point in time. I gave a call out to an officer who, the call was in Hodgesville, and he said he was at his house, and he was driving down Chancery right past the 911 center. So, you know, for me and that, I wasn't really happy about that call, 'cause I knew where he was, but it was after the fact. And he was avoiding the call, but that's not all we all-
Anyone else, uh, have a brief comment regarding the LPR system?
I feel violation of our rights. Just, just saying it straight out, to, to know that I come to your town, and I'm not even from Buckhannon, but I come to your town and I'm logged when I come, and that information is stored, it'd prevent me from coming here to do business.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thanks, Chief. Move on to our agenda, Michael?
First, I want to give you the, the financial report ending January 31st, 2014. You have a summation of that report in front of you. Um, just want to report that our revenues to date are $2,270,554.22. Our total expenditures to date are $2,153,662.73. This is actually in excess of $116,891.49 in revenue over expenditures. Again, like this with every, um, every summary report, if you'd like a detail of that report, we see you after council, I'll be happy to provide that to you. Uh, the next two items are, are big business items, uh, that the city of Buckhannon will be, uh, venturing into over the next several months, and will impact us, um, certainly in the next fiscal year, but also, uh, hopefully in the next five years. The first one in our old business is just to provide you with a Home Rule application update. I have completed, uh, my draft of the Home Rule application, and as reported to you last month, uh, I've actually submitted that to our city attorney, Dave McCully, uh, for his legal review and comment. There's a portion of the application where our city attorney will have to sign off that it does not violate state, state constitution, state statutes. Um, once he's given his blessing on that, I'll probably do a final revision, and I anticipate that, um, we'll be putting an ordinance in front of council, and also holding public hearings that are necessary as part of the application, um, for submission to the State Home Rule Board, probably sometime in mid-March. Again, we have to have that in by June 30th. Um, under new business, I want to notify council, met with the department heads, they have submitted, uh, the general fund department heads, and they have submitted their budgetary requisitions for the 2014-15 general fund budget. I want to let council know that, um, in the process, the next thing is to schedule a finance committee meeting. Trying to get everybody together is, is a pain, sorry to say that, but, uh, so I went ahead and scheduled, um, the meeting, uh, that's for Wednesday, February the 12th at 6 o'clock, it's Wednesday, February the 12th at 6 o'clock, to be here at City Hall. Finance committee's comprised of every member of council. Um, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of things to talk about, not really particularly for the 2014 year, but really moving forward over the next three to five years. Um, a lot of pertinent discussions, um, some requests from some department heads that'll, that'll, that'll require additional discussions, and we'll give you an update on the budget as presented, uh, as, as far as I'm concerned, and, and our, our department heads. At that time, Mr. Thomas, you can talk about additional LPR readers. It's a joke, just to lighten things. So, uh, yeah, I know, I know, I'm actually looking forward to it. So really, just to keep that short and sweet, um, again, both of those, the Home Rule application and the 2014-15 general fund budget, again, are very, very critical, important items that we'll be presenting to you, um, over the next several months, so again-
Has the, has the application period for Home Rule opened up yet?
Yes, yes. Actually, you could start submitting in January 1 of this year.
Okay.
But, uh, we're, we're, we're filling around-
Application period is through July 1st, is that right?
Application period is, is ending June 30th, it'll be effective July 1. I don't know if the Home, I think the Home Rule Board is reviewing these as they receive them. Uh, and that process will start July 1 of 14, and will go five years into, what is that, July of, July 1st, or June 30 of 2019, a five-year period.
So, they give you any idea of what the turnaround is on application?
I don't know, I think it's revolving, actually. Um, there are 20, and I, I'll, I don't think you were on council when I did the presentation. When we have a public hearing, I'll do a PowerPoint, explain this a little bit better, and then we'll highlight each pillar of what we hope to address within Home Rule, um, Tom, but, um, it's, it's a long process, it's a five-year process, I think we have some very progressive things, um, within our Home Rule application that, again, we'll talk-
Careful, that's a loaded word.
Well, you know, I'm conservative, so I'm not, I'm not talking about that, but, uh, I think progressive in a sense of, uh, dealing with issues of economic development.
I'm just teasing.
Okay, I know, I'm sensitive to the progressive word, you know that.
What's the timeline, once you make your application?
What is the timeline? Once we submit the application for it to be approved?
Yeah.
So what you're saying, I think it's a revolving application date. They want to have that-
It's automatic?
Yeah, they want to have that, they want to have that reviewed and returned, um, as soon as possible, because again, the effective date is July 1 of 2014.
They're not on that.
Well, I mean, if you, if you apply, if you apply, like, let's say, you send it in the date of June 30th, what's the earliest that we would actually-
Probably, they would probably hear that within the first month or two. They want to get these out, they want to get these turned around.
Are there 16, is that right?
There's actually 20.
20?
Um, the, there's, there's 20, the, the belief, and the kind of consensus of the municipal league, and all the municipalities around the state, is that before, that already participated, that would be the City of Huntington, City of Charleston, City of Bridgeport, and City of Wheeling will reapply. I know Charleston has some issues with Home Rule as far as gun permitting. If they go into Home Rule, one of the stipulations of Home Rule is they can't do anything as far as guns, so they're debating whether they should do that or not, or go it alone, um, with the court system. So, the belief again is, the four if they apply will get it, um, and then-
Is there any set aside, is there a certain number set aside for Class III municipalities?
No, no, my personal belief is that aside from those, we'll say Big Three, you know, are probably going to be the other ones, your Parkersburgs, your Clarksburgs. Clarksburg has two people on, on the Home Rule Board, so go figure.
Okay.
Uh, Martinsburg, Wheeling, you know, Beckley.
Where's the nearest Home Rule Board member of Florida Department?
They're Charleston.
I just don't want to-
I think the mayor of Charles, not of Charleston, the mayor of Clarksburg, I think, is one.
I would not want to put it off long enough where it might get a beating up your seat, either.
Well, yeah, I, 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 I feel we're gonna have a really good progressive application to submit to them, um, and, and it really, it really captures the spirit of Home Rule as it pertains and, and, uh, to the state, and I think what we're wanting to accomplish, and what the legislature's wanting to accomplish with Home Rule.
Can we have a vote on that application?
Yes.
But if you think they're just flipping them and sending them back, then should we do it a bit earlier?
No, I want to, I'll be honest with you, I want to be a little stingy. Um, I don't want to get, I, I think the things that-
You're gambling.
No, no, I'll gamble on this one, um, because I've been in a Home Rule, I've been in a Home Rule state before, so I'm familiar with this. I wouldn't hold the application as long as I can, because I think what we're having and what we're containing in our application, uh, is going to be-
Things that they, they're not going to see from elsewhere.
Absolutely. So I want to hold that tight to the best, um, and we'll see. But pretty unique, and I, I think people will be pleased with that.
What's your timeline that you're going to spend for you?
Well, it's going to depend on the legal review over here, but, um-
Mr. DeOss has asked me to conclude my, uh, contribution to the project by the end of February.
There you go, but hopefully, a little sooner than that.
Which year is that, David?
Yeah.
That's a low blow.
Not, not to make light of it, but it, we were, we were, when the mayor and I attended a, a Home Rule, um, training session, or, or information session, I said to him, Beckley, about a month ago, uh, they gave us the timeline of last resort. Um, and the timeline of last resort is that this whole process would have to be started by around the 1st of April, and, uh, speaking to Mr. McCully, we, we would like to get this in by mid-March, in case of a public hearing. Um, you have to have one public hearing, um, and one public comment period, uh, and then you read the ordinance. The ordinance is basically council's agreeing to submit this application, is what we do here for other things. Um, i- i- if there's, if there's something that, I don't want to use the word controversial, but if there's something that needs more information, like kind of what we talked about tonight with the LPR, that'll provide us an extra council meeting, I feel, opportunity to, to clean some of that up, um, you know, within our Home Rule application, because-
So the goal is to submit the application by approximately March 15?
No, no, the, the goal is actually to complete that application, have it submitted by May, actually.
Oh, I see.
We've got public hearings, we've got to do the proper notification in the paper, you know, the readings of our ordinances. I mean, so you know, that, that is, you know, it's government, it takes bureaucratic procedural steps.
Slowly.
But, um, I think it's, uh, you know, we've, we've talked a little bit about what, what we potentially do in the Home Rule application, I think, I think you all will be pleased.
Yeah, looking forward to seeing that final document.
That's, um, that's all I have.
Any questions for Michael? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I could have guessed.
Is it about the LPR?
No, okay, can't help you.
It's about the playground equipment. Anything new on that?
Well, we've, we submitted, and I don't know if Jay's going to mention this in his, his conversation, but we submitted our application to, uh, for the Land and Water Conservation Fund with the Department of Interior through the West Virginia Development Office. Um, we did get some feedback from one of the individuals there that said our application was the best, or something along that lines of what was submitted, so yay us. Um, but we're, uh, we're, we're pretty optimistic about it, uh, and the feedback that we've got, there were a few things that, uh, a few I's and T's we needed to dot and cross, we took care of that, no problem, there was nothing that, that really affected the outcome of the application. A- as far as a timeline, it's the federal government, who knows how long that's going to take, but, um, hopefully, hopefully we can get that turned around.
What about the City Park?
City Park?
This, this is City Park, or are you thinking of North?
This is North Buckhannon. City Park, of course, we purchased that playground, I think you were on council when we did that, we purchased that equipment, that is actually sitting at the waste garage.
Okay, just waiting for the weather break.
Exactly, exactly. Um, we're hoping to, to start construction on that in April. Um, the whole, uh, the mayor's goal of that, and speaking, mayor's not here, uh, is to have that by spring playground season, when kids are out, and we've kind of targeted that as May 1st.
Well, I've been talking tonight about people's children and grandchildren, my five children are very anxious to go back to City Park.
Well, my, my children are excited, because they're, they're now telling me, and this is God, this is going to get in the paper. That City Park is the, the park, the park of nothing.
Yeah.
So, you know, they go there, and this equipment was there, now it's not there, so we're going to change the park of nothing to the park of something, at least so my kids can be happy, right? That's what it's all, that's what it's all about.
They can ride in the cruiser, can't they?
They can ride in the cruiser, too. I'm not even going to touch that.
That's the one where they all-
I'm full of witty jokes, but I'm not going there.
Let's work real hard, Dan, on getting the North Buckhannon Park, uh, from the park of nothing, so that our handicapped children can also have a place to play. I, I'm still, I'm, I'm still, um, thinking about the situation, that they're going to be two years later getting their park than the ones at, uh-
They already have more equipped than the City Park is.
But it's not handicapped access.
Wow, neither's City Park.
When's the earliest you'll hear about the North Park as far as the-
The grant that we just applied for?
What's the earliest?
Yeah, well-
September to December.
Very, yeah.
September, okay.
If that's anything like last year, but-
It's going through their review, and he hopes, state level hopes to have their review completed by the end of March, then it makes its way to Philadelphia to Nellie.
Is there any way that, uh, any of our, um, state reps or mayor can sort of push that a little bit by letters from citizens, or anything like that, or not?
I don't know, at the federal level, I don't know how much of an impact that's going to have.
Yeah, and I mean, my thought inside, in-house, I know that there's a lot of stuff coming up for the street department, I mean, they are a full summer, I'm not pushing it, because I know those guys, they have got projects probably up through September and October of this next, this year already. You know, I don't know what would have to be slid or moved, but, um, you know, I, I'm sure something could be done, we could talk to somebody, but I just don't know where it would fit in the queue, Dave.
Well, I mean, you know, Senator Manchin, Rockefeller, and so forth, and just say, hey, we've got this thing, we'd really like to have it, and- Do something as well.
I mean, actually, on a smaller level, Senator Tucker was able to, um, put in a request to the Development Office for some playground equipment, uh, for the amount of about $11,400. Uh, we have to make application of that to the Development Office, that's, there's usually a certain amount of money that's provided our state officials, um, you know, for their districts, you know, that they can, they can use for projects, so, um, I feel pretty good about that. Again, it's 11, it's 11,400, it's a 10% match, which really isn't, isn't anything in the scheme of things. Um, so, you know, we'll be making application of that, but that's, you know, that's on a smaller scale, but still, you know, if that money's there and available, you know, why not apply for it, I guess, if everyone else has an opportunity.
Any final questions for Michael? Okay, Mitch? Hey, Mitch?
Good evening. I have a few items we're working on. I went to the county commission today, um, half of the Upsher County Firefighters Association, we're working on trying to get our radio system upgraded, uh, to make our communications better for our fire ground personnel. I told you in the past about the problems we have had with a phone line that goes from the communication center to the phone office, and we got one runs from a fire station, yada, yada. Anyway, today we got our license back to do away with that line, we got our FCC license. Told you sometime back that, uh, Green Bank and Sugar Grove had not filed any protest to that, so I gave that information to a radio guy, so hopefully, uh, that's, funding for that's already been appropriated, this is actually something I'm helping the county work on for our communications, so, uh, that will be going up, uh, in the next short period of time. Uh, update on this, uh, Fire Civil Service Commission, the council had approved with the retirement of Captain Wilfong, that left a, um, position, a vacancy for a position of captain in the fire department. Uh, you folks approved that vacancy, that's step one process, the Fire Civil Service Board met, and testing arrangements to test for that position are underway now, the Fire Civil Service Board, Fire Civil Service Board did approve that. Step number two was, you all had approved also to conduct a new hiring list, the Fire Civil Service Board is also in the process of starting the, uh, legal advertisement, recruiting process to establish a new eligible list of which to hire firefighters, so, some of that, that's some of the things that are going on. Uh, I'm going to be on my soapbox again here about smoke detectors. I did an article on news, did an article with the folks, both folks from the press, and I went to a residence the other day that had a fire, and had not one, it had zero smoke detectors in, and I still can't believe in this day and age of license plate readers that folks still don't have smoke detectors in their homes.
Maybe you'll check that, too.
I lost a family of five, when I say family, I mean immediate family, because their home had no smoke detectors. As Matt said, I'm going to make Matt sound like a pup, this is, I just started my 40th year in the fire service, and, uh, it's not a pretty thing sometimes, and smoke detectors can prevent a lot of this. So, you folks out there, if you don't have a smoke detector, get one, and I can't emphasize enough to you folks who live in rental property, if your landlord isn't providing you smoke detectors, come and see me, we can certainly remedy that problem. State law requires a smoke detector in every private home, every rental unit, every apartment building, even your private home, you're required to have a smoke detector in every sleeping unit of a residence and a smoke detector in a living area. And you're also required, if you have gas, anything other than electric, you're required to have a carbon monoxide detector. That is state law, it's nothing we made up, and that goes for private homes. I'm not worried so much about what the law is, I'm worried about the outcome of folks that don't have them. We had an incident this past weekend, a gentleman was asleep in his bed, there was a fire in the wall. Actually, set the bed on fire, and this gentleman said he had a dream about he was choking in smoke, well, he woke up, he wasn't dreaming. Not one smoke detector in that bedroom, the gentleman was very, very lucky. So can't emphasize enough the importance of smoke detectors. Again, if you're running into problems requiring those, come and see me, I'll do what I can.
And refresh your batteries.
Right, change your batteries. I don't, I don't buy the, I don't buy the changes in your battery. Every year I buy, I buy the thing, change your battery every time you set your clock up, that's twice a year. I don't trust batteries. We, our fire equipment has a plethora of batteries in it, and they don't last a year. We find some of them last six months. So don't leave the battery or smoke detector for you. Change it, every time it time changes, change your battery. It's maybe not safe.
I remember the days when the smoke alarm batteries were more than the smoke alarm is today, so I mean, it's...
I bought some smoke alarms the other day, I think I paid $4 and something for smoke detectors or nothing.
And Mitch, aren't you supposed to upgrade them every 10 years or replace them or...?
Well, some of them, it depends on the type, five years, you know.
Is there any type that's better than others? Good old $4 ones? The $4 ones is as good as the $12 one?
A $4 one, we can have, there's two types, ionization, photoelectric. Ionization kind of bounces light off the particles, they react a little bit quicker. We can have that debate, that's like smooth or straight or nozzles, we have that debate forever.
Does Google have that one?
The bottom line is folks should...
They want to.
Let's all have this other question.
Any questions for Mitch? Okay, thank you, Mitch. Jay?
Now, we've talked about one, so it'll be brief. Nothing to do, nothing to update you all on the North Buchanan Park that we haven't already talked about. The Sudden Link Fiber Optic Project, there's been some action in the past month on Mr. McCully's part and I, trying to get a resolution. We've contacted First Energy. They purchased a right-of-way easement from the City of Buchanan in 1989. Currently, their existing power poles are not on our property, they are on the Department of Highway's property, but they purchased an easement from us to the north, which is where the Sudden Link poles have been set. First Energy is not aware of providing Sudden Link with any letter of consent for the installation of those poles, and the reason I bring that up is First Energy does not grant ground rights, which means the installation of above-ground structures to any third parties on any of their easements. I'm not saying yay or nay, somebody was in the wrong, somebody was in the right, there's still some more research being conducted on that, but we've heard most of our input from the DOH and First Energy side, and we're still just a couple of weeks away from, from hoping to get in contact with Sudden Link to, to reach a resolution on this, this matter.
I just want to make sure I understand you correctly. First Energy bought an easement from the City of Buchanan but doesn't use it?
That is correct.
And that unused easement is where Sudden Link ran their fiber?
That is correct.
On above their poles?
That is correct.
Well, that is a bit of a horse of a...
Well, they, they may have had plans when Corridor H was going through in 86, and maybe it...
Well, I think that works in our favor, actually.
What did they purchase that for in 1989?
The cost? I think future considerations, Dave?
There was two simultaneous agreements done at the same time. One was to relocate power lines on the 15 acres that the city then owned, that we had just negotiated the purchase of a release of restrictive covenants on from the Edmiston family, having been broached by Dale Riggs and Al Muse, developers that wanted to turn around and peddle the property to Walmart. There were electrical lines and gas lines all over the place, the city acted as a facilitator with the utility companies to relocate certain utilities so that the city could then turn around and auction the property, which we sold, I think, for 440,000 bucks, so that Walmart had gone down. That's bottom line. Those two things were occurring about simultaneously. The power company was also because of the development of Corridor H being pushed hard by the highway department to relocate part of its transformer facilities, so the city basically was partnering on both ends to try to realize the future development of its 15 acres that was essentially a dump at that point, while also trying to facilitate things with the highway department and the power company to realize the completion of Corridor H through Buchanan. If you would've asked me that yesterday, I would not have remembered 90% of what I just told you. But having gone back to the files and having looked things up in the county clerk's office, the documents pretty much speak for themselves.
Yes, Tom, answer your question, they purchased that easement, that's where the poles were, four of the five poles are located. There's one pole that's located on DOH property, but inside the limits of what First Energy...
Sudden Link pole.
Yes, Sudden Link pole.
Is on DOH property.
Yes, but it's violating some clearances of First Energy.
Sure.
So that's where we are. Their legal is looking into it, and we're still working on that.
This is what happens when you don't, when you ask, I think it's better to ask forgiveness than permission.
Permission. The water treatment improvement, water treatment plan improvement project, as I briefly touched on last month, we signed the agreement with Chapman Technical Group. Next week, at the water board, I'm gonna ask for their permission to issue a notice to proceed to Chapman Technical Group so they can begin on what's called Task Order Three, which again is the structural renovations and repair of the settlement basin, the replacement of the mechanical equipment, and upgrades to the pipe gallery. Island Avenue, probably 70% complete right now, I have 90% of the design drawings done, and as soon as I wrap up about four or five contracts dealing with the public safety complex, the next contracts, I want to get on the engineering side of it, so that that project will be ready to go. Nothing to do on Donald Route 20 lane winding project, leaving the best for last, the public safety complex. Through January, they completed all the drywall, the installations of all the door frames, the painting and priming of the walls, and they've got up all the ceiling grids. I would like to ask you all, because they've really done a good job, you know, not just because they're not here and, you know, we all work for the city, but the, the street department's really done a good job. I'd like to ask you all after next week to maybe go down and look at the progress the gentlemen have made. The reason I say after next week is because we have the three contractors in doing the last of the major HVAC fire, security system and fire alarm. They're gonna be buttoning that up, and then after that, we're gonna be putting in ceiling grid, putting on the outlets and light switches, the motion sensors that will turn lights on and off in some of the rooms, and the installation of the tile and floor coverings, and that'll be it. Sounds like not a lot to do, but it's sequencing and, and looking at some packages, more importantly, the phone system package that we're gonna purchase for the police department. We want to make sure that it ties into what City Hall has planned for an upgrade to its telephone system in the, in the future. We want to make sure that the equipment we buy there doesn't paint us into a corner and it's compatible with everything else. We're just taking our time and researching the telephone system and the security system, and those are the two big ones I'm working on. Hope to send the carpet and floor tile bid package out tomorrow to carpet installers so that if within two or three weeks, we can start carpeting and putting down the tile. You see on your list of, your, your package that there was a bid opening held on January 8th for the paint, I just want to bring this up, that sent out six bids, most of them were local, you know, Bridgeport was the farthest away, two companies from Bridgeport were the farthest away, we received four bids, of course, one of them came in after the deadline, so it was non-compliant. Sherman Williams was the lowest bidder at $1,081. The reason we were able to get such a good price on that paint was because they have a state contract for governmental agencies, and I do believe the City of Buchanan would fall under a governmental agency, so we were able to take advantage of the, the better pricing, and that's all I have.
What's the, what's the latest completion date?
Well, due to the, we're gonna have to bid out the phone systems due to, you know, estimates we're receiving on a couple budgetary, budgetary estimates, they're gonna be, you know, above or near our thresholds, we're just gonna play it safe and bid it out. So it's a two-week advertising, two-week receiving of bids, so it's gonna put it back at least a month. But speaking with Matt, you know, he understands that we want to do this right, because what we want to do, Dave, is, is bring the entire city, all, all departments under, under one phone system umbrella, instead of having separate phone lines going to every department, you know, we're, we're moving forward, it's IP compatible, CAT 5, you know, we're gonna work over the internet, that's the way the school board is, you know, that's the way a lot of the larger, you know, industries and companies around West Virginia work, not individual phone lines, it's just one central location, then it's just spurs out, that's the type of system that we're looking at, and we just want to make sure we have all our I's dotted and T's crossed, and it just so happened that Mr. Clemmons contacted a person at the college, and the college is also considering a phone system upgrade next Thursday. There's a, well, there's a presentation next Thursday about their phone system upgrade, and we've been invited to sit on that and see what they're gonna do. So the timing kind of fell right. I know it pushes Matt back a month, maybe five to six weeks, but I think it'll be worth it in the long run to, to make sure that we're spending the money wisely and making sure everything works the way we want it to.
I believe that, Jeremy, didn't you grow up in that house on Canola Street?
Corner of Canola and Victoria.
Corner, the one that has all the problems with the shippo and all that stuff, but the, pardon me, Jeremy grew up, but he should've torn those shrubbery's out when he was there.
Trust me, after growing up having to trim them, I would love to.
And now they've become a contributing element of the historical significance of the historical, of the residents that something, something...
What's the name of the shrub, what are they?
Green?
They could be pink as far as I know.
Yeah.
I have a few private names in the office.
No, I don't, I would have said Mr. McGowan.
I could ask my grandmother.
I'd be, I'd be interested in his own.
To know what his, contributing element is really holding up the Route 20 lane winding project.
They'd be transplanted, you know?
I can burn them, it would've been a childhood dream.
Well, they said the owner could do it themselves.
Yes, the owner can do it themselves. The owner can do it themselves, and I guess that's not an option at this point in time.
Jeremy, see us later.
Cover up your license plate.
No doubt.
Any questions for Jay?
This meeting's getting out of hand.
Jay, or Jerry's not here this evening. I have just one item to remind you, it's not an action that we need to take. We took an action back in December's meeting to set the election, the holiday schedule for the city, and just as a reminder, the Board of Election, Board of Education Special Election, which is this Saturday, was not on that, is not intended to be on that schedule, therefore Saturday Special Election is not a city holiday. That affects some departments of the city. David, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. A few updates. First off, as maybe some of you have observed, we've been as vigilant as we can given the just horrific weather that we've had the last couple of weeks. To stay upon the Tucker Street property, Mr. Tenney has completely dismantled the mobile home. There is now a four, five-foot pile of debris where the mobile home formerly sat.
It's a mobile home, it's just torn up.
It's in pieces, yes. And, you know, we had a, we had a discussion with Mr. Doss, Mr. Clemmons, Mayor Davidson last Friday, which was the drop dead date to have the trailer gone, and they were working on Friday with it. So we made the command decision to sit tight for a few more days, weather permitting, and see if they actually completed. It's a site better than what it was, but it's still a site, if that makes sense. So let's see what the next few days brings relative to that, but we've been monitoring that very closely.
The motor home, the mobile home's gone, but there are four or five pieces of rusted-out equipment that he's using to tear apart there.
They have hooked the, the trailer part of things, which I think they welded the wheel back on, and they're, I think it's capable now of being pulled out, but again, let's, we'll see what the next few days brings. I have a memo for you, which I'm excited about. This is to members of council, Mr. Doss, City Administrator, Chief Gregory, Chief Tacy, Deborah Brockham, and SYC Director from me. Meth identification and contamination abatement workshop, I'm pleased to confirm that on Monday, February 24, the City of Buchanan will sponsor a meth identification and contamination abatement workshop, beginning at 6:00 PM and lasting until about 8:00 PM in the Stockard Youth Center Gymnasium. Police Chief Matt Gregory will MC the event that will feature Buchanan Police Officer Nick Kainer, leading various exercises and discussions to aid our residents, including landlords, in identifying signs of meth manufacturing and usage. Following Officer Kainer, Mr. Brandon Lewis with the State of West Virginia's clandestine Drug Laboratory Meth Remediation Program Division of the Department of Health and Human Resources will speak about the serious problems associated with meth residue and the need to fully but properly decontaminate areas that were subjected to meth manufacture or use. And you might recall this blurb from the last meeting when we were talking about tabling the ordinance until we get more input from him, which he's also going to do earlier in the day on the 24th with Mr. Clemmons and myself. Mr. Lewis is a chemist with more than 15 years of meth identification and contamination abatement experience. He served as a chemist for the West Virginia State Police Drug Lab for a decade before moving to the meth remediation program with the DHHR several years ago. Mr. Lewis is well-versed with the federal EPA March 2013 Meth Contamination Abatement Guidelines as he served on the federal advisory panel. He also has been instrumental in the development of the State of West Virginia's rules and regulations through the DHHR. I believe attendees will find this workshop to be very hands-on and informative as our community continues to wage its own war on drugs. As the program for the workshop takes shape, city officials will share more information concerning the Monday, February 24 agenda. Everyone is urged to attend, and I hope some of our council members and other city officials can be there as well. This is a roller coaster item that I'm gonna bring up for you. It's a resolution that Mr. Clemmons and I talked quite a lot about the last couple of weeks, and I don't know whether any of you live the boring lives that we do, but we occasionally watch C-SPAN, and there's been a lot of discussion on Capitol Hill, that's in Washington DC at the federal level, about the act that was implemented, the Biggered Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012, which basically, the way this is going to work, the federal government has directed FEMA and the NFIP, that's the National Flood Insurance Program, to reassess properties throughout the United States, with the idea being that there needs to be an exponential new revenue pool established to, to help address situations primarily resulting from hurricanes along the Gulf and East Coast. As a consequence of this, you're gonna see areas like West Virginia, which have a very minimal flood history, our citizens are going to pay more for flood insurance under this Biggered Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act to subsidize part of the increased cost that the federal government is realizing from hurricane issues. So this resolution is supportive of Senator Joe Manchin, who is one of the 28 Senate sponsors of a bill that would put the quash, at least for a four-year period, while additional studies are being done, there would be no flood insurance premium increases. We were not gonna do this earlier today because there was a press release from Senator Manchin's office that said he was pleased that this was going to save West Virginia millions of dollars in flood insurance premiums. The only problem was, was that the House of Representatives has tabled the legislation, and they've not yet approved it, and there are two houses of Congress. So we, we started out this morning, we were gonna do the resolution by about noon, we weren't gonna do the resolution because we thought Congress had already passed it, but only the Senate has, so we are offering this following resolution, which would be 2014-05 of the Council of the City of Buchanan, whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, administers the National Flood Insurance Program, and whereas the NFIP establishes flood zones and base flood elevations to establish flood insurance premiums charged to those insured, and whereas in July of 2012, the United States Congress passed the Biggered Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act, which calls on FEMA and other agencies to make a number of changes to the way the NFIP is administered, key provisions of which legislation... NFIP is administered, key provisions of which legislation require the NFIP to substantially increase flood insurance premiums, and whereas many upshur... Many property owners in West Virginia, including Buckcannon and Upshur County residents, may be subjected to exponential flood insurance premium rate increases as a consequence of implementation of the Biggert Waters Act, and whereas many residents of the Buckcannon Upshur community will not be able to afford the flood insurance premium rate increases that shall be implemented pursuant to the Biggert Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act of two thousand and twelve, and whereas the Council of the City of Buckcannon believes that it is egregiously unfair to require the citizens of the State of West Virginia, including Buckcannon and Upshur County, to subsidize federal funding shortfalls largely attributed to other national or regional flooding events occurring elsewhere in the United States, and whereas the City Council applauds the United States Senate and the recent efforts of Senator Joe Manchin to pass and enact the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act that passed the U.S. Senate by a vote of sixty-seven to thirty-two on January thirty, two thousand and fourteen, and whereas the House of Representatives has yet to pass and enact the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act, which, if enacted, would table any flood insurance premium increases for four years, while FEMA and Congress conduct affordability studies, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Buckcannon as follows. Three things. The City Council hereby formally and in all respects supports and endorses passage and enactment of the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act. Two, that the City Council strongly urges the citizens of the Buckcannon Upshur community, the Upshur County Commission, and the elected and appointed officials of the State of West Virginia to join with the Buckcannon City Council to make their voices heard with the United States Congress, and particularly with the West Virginia delegation of the U.S. House of Representatives, in order to advance the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act to passage and enactment. And three, that this resolution or a copy thereof shall be liberally distributed to all elected and appointed local, state, and federal officials to advance passage and enactment of the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act, and further to evidence the formal approval thereof by the Council of the City of Buckcannon. As a footnote to that, I was in a meeting with Mike Fiola, who, as you know, is the local president of First Community Bank this last week, and he was inquiring about flood insurance and what was going on at the Buckcannon level, and he offered up, and this was after Mr. Clemmons and I were already working on something, he offered up that a local property owner, I don't know who it is or where their property is, who has been paying a flood insurance premium of about a hundred dollars a month, received a preliminary notice under this new legislation that was going to increase their monthly premium to one thousand dollars a month. Now, I'm not here to be an alarmist and scare everybody that everybody in Buckcannon Upshur who has flood insurance, that their rates are going to go up tenfold, but the point is, is that this legislation is intended, that is, the Biggert...
Waters.
What's it called again? Yeah, whatever. The Biggert Waters thing is intended to raise billions of new dollars, so it's got to come from somewhere. That's the bottom line. I earnestly encourage City Council to adopt this resolution so that tomorrow we can start shipping it off to Charleston and Washington, D.C. to get on the Senator Manchin bandwagon.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second?
I have a question, though. Why are we singling out Senator Manchin for particular praise? Is he a sponsor?
He was a primary sponsor of the legislation that, again, just cleared the United States Senate last Friday.
Did you mention that he was a primary sponsor in the letter, Dave?
It's not in the resolution.
I'd put that in the resolution. I think that...
The council applauds the United States Senate and the recent efforts of Senator Joe Manson to pass and enact the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act. He's one of twenty-eight Senate sponsors, so there were a bunch of them.
Rockefeller was not a sponsor.
I don't know. I don't want to either applaud or disparage our good friends there.
Well, I just want to say...
Well, he isn't sponsoring anything.
Former president of West Virginia Wesleyan College.
I just want to... I mean, I don't want to...
You don't want to hear my opinion.
Anyway, if he is, and you're mentioning one, we should probably mention them both. That's kind of my point.
We have a motion on the floor, I think.
What are you doing? Well, you can move to amend it to include Senator Rockefeller.
Why don't we review it and find out what the facts are?
Dave, just like... Can we table it until later in the meeting, and somebody can maybe look it up real quick?
They're in my clock to the eighty.
I'll say one.
Okay. Table it for fifteen seconds.
Brings us to the consent agenda.
I actually have one more thing.
Okay.
The efforts to reach federal prosecutor Bill Eelenfeld in Wheeling. Yesterday morning, while I was in class, he returned my call. I said, "Call him back. He would be in the office all day." I called him. It was a very nice message, that we look forward to working with Buckcannon, that kind of thing. I called him back, and he had an emergency meeting in Clarksburg that took him out, and he hasn't returned my call, my subsequent call. But we have... It's like, it sounds like an ET thing. We have made contact, so...
Should have gone to Clarksburg.
More to follow. We're hopeful. Well, I didn't know where he was. I didn't have a license plate scanner.
He was taking their money down.
Huh?
He was taking their money down.
That's all I have, unless you have questions for me. We have a couple of ordinances coming up that we are working on relative to zoning with the military zone as well as the college zone.
Anything else?
All right.
Brings us to consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting, January sixteenth. Approval of building and wiring permits. Approval of payment of bills. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Somebody? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're back to the flood insurance resolution.
I can't tell. I just withdraw my question, and I move the question.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution two-fourteen oh-five regarding...
I do. There was...
Do they have a motion? They have a second?
I'll say it.
Ron, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Does that have to be a roll call?
Yeah, it's a roll call. We already got your signature, but I think it's unanimous. Jay, David?
Yes.
Tom O'Neal?
Yes.
Ron Pugh?
Yes.
John Walts?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Passes.
This is one more example of how intrusive the federal government can become.
Well, they're just trying to be equal. They're trying to tax all residents across the United States.
Why not a national sales tax then to help cover us?
Well, the idea that we are going to be subsidizing flooded insurance for Millionaire Beach Homes in New Jersey and North Carolina is ridiculous.
It is ridiculous.
Well, the issue comes out that the State of West Virginia is actually in the black. They have more collections from policies, and they have payouts. And so West Virginia as a state is positive in a sense. I mean, they're near zero, but they're positive in terms of their payments, but there's a sixteen billion dollars, if I remember right, deficit at the national level.
And increase the premiums in those states that are subject to those disasters.
West Virginia very seldom gets flood damage that's beyond water coming up and water going down. We don't get the storm surges and so on. There are some cases, but typically not.
One more reason for term limits.
Speaking of term limits, you're on, Dave. Comments?
Well, God, I think I said what I wanted to say. The... I appreciate Jeremy coming and making his presentation. I thought it was really good. The, you know, we... I was concerned about the process, and I think we need to ask penetrating questions. I think we had good motives for what we did, but it's a lot... Be very interesting to find out some more about it. And I just would remind the council, next Wednesday is the finance...
Yes.
...meeting, and that we've got some issues we need to deal with, not just for... We need to look beyond twelve months. We need to look at the next three to five years. That's it.
John? No comments? Ron?
Just like to remind everybody to, if you haven't voted early, to go out and vote your heart in the election Saturday for the Board of Education. That's it. God bless America.
Tom?
Nothing further than before, except I'd move that we go into an executive session if counsel is so inclined. I'd like to ask some questions of our city attorney in an attorney-client setting.
Is there a second to...
Second.
Second?
Is it to deal with the issues that you can do in executive session?
Yeah. Yes.
That should be specifically stated so that the general area, is it property litigation, personnel?
Well, it's potential litigation.
That may be identified.
That's good. I mean, it's not good.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most? Okay, you folks can go.
Hey, John, can I get a...